Father is going to be in the order?
Father, Lord, we have a Father who is Paul at this time. Thank you for the beautiful day. Father, we thank you for this staff here. I enjoyed Dr. Branson's speech today and he was quick to commend this staff that he's been blessed to work with. We thank you for all the blessings on Wayne County. We just ask you as a board that we continue to realize that we impact student lives also. So that we make best decisions of the best not only for our students but for Wayne County. Just continue to lead God direct us in all that we do. We ask you all in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. To the Father, in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Move the second. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Motion to approve the minutes from January 22nd and also February 2nd.
Still moving?
Move the second. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Discussion in.
All right, first item is now sent your copy of RFP request for proposal with our construction management route for really for all our projects coming up. Again, we know that model of for our projects for a lot of reasons, but I wanted to just kind of get your feedback to see if you're ready to proceed. See if there's something that we want to move forward with. You know, we are at, we are at a point where we need to make a decision where we need to direct Dr. Mr. Buckley to get busy on some plans. If we're going to stay with the, you know, hard design mid build model or if we do this, we need to get busy naming a construction manager, which is really a general contractor, same person basically. Where we can start the design and start this discussion, but we want to be ready to go just as soon as we can begin. I'll remind you, we can't begin this James E. Baker project especially until after, you know, gets all approvals and the general sessions over and the budgets approved by governors. That process over would be, you know, so we're looking at really not beginning on Baker project probably August 1st or a little later.
Okay, what will this be, a time period to put in applications, then you review when you make a recommendation?
Yes, sir, they'll, you know, we put this request for proposal out. Mr. Buckley will lead that, that process and they'll submit, have some middles. You as a board can review them, we'll review them, grade them out, but we can, you know, we can even have interviews or, you know, we can put a rubric to them to parse the selection of the CM. And that is the whole, that's the most important part of this process is selecting a, you know, construction manager or a general contractor. It's really no different, once you select the construction manager, no difference than the process we use for all of these projects. I'll just remind you that we are, you know, we have a set amount of money for this project and we really don't want to go because that means we're going to end up sacrificing one of those projects we've got.
Does this position have to bond?
Sir.
Lots of to bond?
Yes, oh, that's, that's included in proposal, they'll have to have that. And Mr. Buckley, that's, that's his role, he'll verify all of that rules. Kind of like you remember when we opened up bids and he had all those, you know, check marks and that sort of thing. He reviews them and then any other, any other criteria we want to include, you know, that's, that's our choice.
Do they have their own work, do they have to have their own working confrontation or?
Yes, they have to have all of that, you know, they have to be verified, their.
Right, building entry.
Subcontractors and those types of folks, they have to handle, that's on them though, you know. Yes, and I think in my opinion, the probably the biggest criteria point is, you know, the experience. Experience in, in general construction, but also being a construction manager as well because the biggest advantage to this is they, they work on the design with us as the owners, the architect, to come up with a guaranteed maximum price, okay? And that's the price, they're contractually bound by that part, they can't go over that price. And any savings under that price comes back to us as the owner, so, you know, so that's why all the design and all the discussion has to happen on the front end. And that bacon, like we said, there's a lot of real specific things that have to go on. We have to decide if we can afford it, if we want to include it in there, you know, we talked about making bacon all totally enclosed, you know, those two wings that go from the upper, I call it the upper building down to the annex. You know, you go outside going from, you know, that area or from the main building, the upper building down to the gym, that's open right now. So I've already kind of put that out there, we would like to pursue enclosing those if, you know, if it's, you know, if it meets.
We have a dollar amount budgeted for this position?
We, we have seven, I think seven million dollars is what it was.
Oh, that's for the entire project, so the. The individual?
That's part of it, yes, yes, their percentage, you know, they, their percentages, you know, they'll, they'll submit that, that's part of the, their submitted, what their, what their construction management fee, it'd be a percentage of the project. But, you know, we have seven, I think seven million allocated out these plus funds and we're looking to, you know, there's a title of first, we've actually come in, you know, maybe four million and that, that's, that's matching up with today's prices. And man, Mr. Buckley is involved in conversation about construction costs and such.
So you're saying the contractor and the construction manager will be one in the same?
Basically, yes, sir. It's just a different way, it's a different way of them. What, what makes it most sense for me is this, is that when you got a big project, a general contractor does a hard, you know, design mid build project, they, they look at everything and they're going to put that cushion in there, you know. They want to make sure they're making their profit, they want to make sure they can pay their subcontractors. And generally what they do is they have the same contractors kind of follow them around wherever they, they land the project. That's generally how they stay in business. In a construction management model, they're gonna, they're gonna try to save as much money and not sacrifice quality in every single item or every single part of the construction progress, project, you know. So that's where the savings comes in, which is trying to come out of the wash probably pretty close is what, I mean, that's what we're telling them now. It's not like it used to be, it used to be construction management model, it costs you a lot more for what you're doing. The general contractors have caught on, they're doing the same work and so they, they've caught on, they're basically bidding out about the same as they're, as they do in a hard design mid deal model, so.
But we're being from the, from the design.
We will, we'll be, we'll be a lot more involved in the whole project, the whole time with the construction management model. You know, like right now, we're going to talk about the design and what we're doing and what we want to see because they got to come up with that maximum price, but it's not going to grow. So they're going to be asking all these questions, we have to decide. And that's, that's what I've seen, when I look back at these other projects that we've done with Scrivin', Justice Alomich, Odom, even Martha Ross, all, all four of those. When we look back at what we awarded a bid for, every single one of them is over that original bid. And the reason why is not because, you know, something happens because we ended up changing something, we added something, we found out, you know, this was going on or we, you know, something we changed, basically a change order of some kind. And we ended up, it's costing more money. And this, using a construction management model, that's not going to happen, that's what it's, it's a GMP, that's what they got, a guaranteed maximum price. They're not going over that price, it's not going to be a million, two million over that because, you know, we can change something, but we have to agree to it, change it out to the fact, prove it, there's a process to do that, it's going to be spelled out for you. My concern with this project is, is because it is going to be so time sensitive and having to coordinate schedules that we're still having school over here. We're talking about, school's probably going to be, be back in session before we really get going well. So we're not going anywhere, we got to have school, we got to have pickup, drop off, buses, right here, basically where the new construction is going to be going on. So there's a lot of choreographing school during the next school year, new construction. Then next summer, that's when they're going to come in and really do all new finishes on the inside, moves in walls, get the doors up to where they're compliant, right now they're not ADA compliant, those types of things, so.
But he would make recommendations such as, have a lot of fluff for architects?
Oh, yeah, yes, that's, right, that's, that's, that's the, that's another pro to it. Before, we just kind of send Mr. Buckley off to his laboratory, he comes back with the design of a building of what, you know, what he thinks will work, but also what looks good. He's in the business of looking good, so he's always going to go on the, on the side of aesthetics, looks good, he's not going to worry about the price, he's going to break it to you and change it to the owners. This model is weak side, how much money we spend it, they got to make it fit, so.
I'm talking about your skill system and I don't call the names, but if I called the little car cake basketball court that I grew up in a mall and we helped the parents, we played some computers with. When we got my edge of the class, I did the minimum class size, I was state and I had those shop classes to build all the cabinets. I'm more worried about that stuff.
Right, and that's, that, that part of it, we have to do, that's the part that the states participate in. The states participate in certain things, that's that four million dollars that people alluded to, the states participate for the entitlement program. We have to get those class sizes up and what we've decided to do really early on is we're going to make them the same size as we've made all the new schools. And so we'll be combining some classrooms, there will be two classrooms, we'll do one classroom. It's shifting, shifting some halls around, you know, swapping the, moving the media center back to the old lunchroom over there, that's where the media center is planned to go right now. That gives you some more classroom space right there in the middle of the building, feel like the new lives, you have a larger media center. And then you got a brand new lunchroom entrance, stage, kind of commons area and a kitchen cafeteria and all of that, just like the rest of the schools when you come in, that's what it's going to look like. You know, of course you're going to have that, it won't be as big because you're not going to have the spokes going off of that commons area is what I call it.
Yeah, I want to make sure I understand this concept. From the onset, the construction manager is going to add cost to the product.
Well, yes.
But we're hopeful that his recommendations and his experience and knowledge is going to wind up with a better product for a lower price.
We're going to set the price, the price is going to be set before we do anything. But that's, that's set in the design phase as far as we, us as the owners telling them what we want and what we have to do, you know.
But I guess my question is, what is the benefit of paying this guy? What's going to be the reward or the, I know you said better scheduling would be one thing.
Definitely better scheduling and not going over the maximum price that we're going to set on the front end. Again, all four projects, I can show you what the numbers are, the other bill, other bids, the hard bids, we went over like a substantial amount. It's not that we overspent or things didn't come in under budgets because we changed things after the fact.
So hopefully if we listen to this guy, we're not going to have any overruns and that's where the savings will come in for his project.
That's guaranteed, you're not going to have any overrun, that's part of the contract. And any savings comes back to us. Guaranteed maximum price is 10 million and comes in at 9 million, we get a million dollars back and it can't go over the 10 million that we set, yes.
So you're saying that we're guaranteed not to have any overruns, but what if something comes up and it's going to cost more, nothing that we change? Are they going, going to honor that and make it happen or?
That's part of the contract now, that's, if not, if we change something, if we get down the road and say, uh, we need to whatever, do something that we didn't talk about in the, in the design phase, now that, that would be us and we just decide, and we had the option to do that. But that has to be approved, everybody knows that, it's a change, it's not, they don't get to change anything, it's, uh-oh, but if it costs the plywood or it costs the concrete, but, sorry, it's going to cost 11 millions to 10, no. That's, that's what, that, that's the whole benefit of that guaranteed maximum price.
Okay, is customary for the architect to also be this person that does the contracting part or?
Is he going to do?
Is he the management part, construction management part, is it customary for that to be a saving to? Now, I came in a little bit late, so I'm just trying to.
Of his hand, RFP, is that what you're asking?
Yes.
Yes, I mean, that's, we're paying him, he's still doing his job of designing, so he's going to work hand in hand, that's, that's not going to change a whole lot, but instead of him going off and designing what we're telling him to do, he's going to take a lot more direction from the owners and the construction manager and general contractors, the same person. And then he's taking a lot more direction, he's still going to have to design and make it work and do his job as architect.
Okay, so who is actually looking out for us and our benefit and actually trying to have, make savings and things where we could? I know we won't go over, but if there was a way that we could actually save, is there anybody that has obvious interests in hand in doing that?
Well, yeah, I mean, that's what you're paying the architect for and that's why you get to make sure you hire the right CM, general contractor. These folks, you know, they don't stay in business if they, you know, your whole balance is if you take the cheapest person every single time, probably sacrifices quality. So you have to find people that have a, have built a reputation of being a fair price or a good product, good quality service product, whatever you're getting out of them, so.
I guess that leads up to my question about will we ever, ever consider a project manager in-house that will also be like our eyes to see if the, you know, construction manager is actually looking out for our benefit because they're, you know, they're the business of making money. You know, that's their job, that's, that's the way they make their living and that's an understanding, you know, on that. So I'm just wondering if we'll ever look into that, you know, maybe somebody that is already within our system that you could add a supplement to that person. So you don't have just one big expense, you know, coming out, but.
Yeah, that has a lot of merit, but that is a very specific skill set and experiences that if you have that in all the places. I mean, we've had one in Wayne County for past 30 years, Ray Thorn, that retired, when he retired, that would be, we don't have anyone with that type of expertise experiences in, in our system now, which is not, my knowledge is not even close. That's my opinion, but I'm glad speaking with him, thanks he had that experience. But, but I mean, you get into, what you're talking about is hiring someone, so you get into, same thing we've run into now is competing in the, in the private market force, how much we pay this person? General contractors, they, they make good money, so how much, how many projects, big projects do you have going all the time? We just went through, this is our second, this is our second or third year, we've, we've had exactly no projects going on. So what, what kind of guy per person salary, the, I'm sure what they're doing right now, see what I'm saying? So that's the whole.
Yeah, not just the big projects, I mean, it's, I mean, when they do this, it's pretty much anything that is, you know, that they, they look into, the savings that the county can receive as well as the quality along with that.
Big systems use, I don't, I just, my concern is I don't know that we're big enough to have enough of that going on continuously, year after year. You know, you're getting through these elementary schools, we're sort of going to have projects like you're talking about, but I don't know. Have a full-time person that you're going to keep working, that salary that you probably have to pay him to get somebody of quality to do that.
Okay, walk us through the chronology of this process. Will the construction manager help us design what we want before we put it out for bids? I mean, you know, we got to put it, we, we, we're obligated to put it out for bids, correct?
No, sir.
We're not?
This is another model, okay, that's what I'm saying, you can build, this is another construction model. A hard design mid build is what we've always used, that's what you're talking about, put it out for bid.
Right.
This is called a construction management model where you're picking a construction manager or general contractor, that's, that's your person. But past that, there is no difference, you're not taking bids, so.
The advantage I say is that you do, you often go with low bid, but that may not be the best policy, you know, maybe find a tough place to get those. And when you take the bid process, you go ahead, most time you go take a low bid.
Right.
But I like this way, let's hear it, we can research, reach the background, so it'll be good quality work, you know, this is the right amount, you've got to stand.
Yeah, I can get, I can ask Mr. Buckley, I'm wearing him out, but I can ask him to come and he, I think he's going to present that same information I presented to you, you know, a few meetings ago. But, but he will, I mean, he'll certainly explain later, hey, that's, that's.
We choose. Is that right?
Yes, the construction manager, general contractors.
We choose.
Correct, I'm saying, this, this is a.
So that's where we come in for questions.
They're, they're. Correct, that's, that's what you're doing there, that's the first, yeah. That, I guess, award, I mean, you're picking out of these semis, that's, I guess that's the same thing as the bid.
So we may have three firms that want to do this work for us, so we have to select.
Correct. Select which one, you know, however you want to build a rubric with criteria and Mr. Buckley will walk, walk through, that's, he's the one that's generated this, this sample that's got all the, all the, all the things. And this is pretty much, you know, anything can be added or deleted after you.
So he would be one, we could say if we wanted as many local contractors as possible, that's.
Certainly him.
When you're looking, that's what we would like to possible.
Correct, and you have, you have a lot more say-so in construction management, that aspect of it than you do when you do a hard bid, design bid deal. I mean, they're, they got a price, they bid, they're going to, and they're certainly going to try to use local folks, but they're not.
They got their own people to follow.
That's right. And they'll use folks even if, what you went into, local folks, you know, small towns, don't pick those folks that are doing so many more jobs, it's hard for.
Would, would language be in the agreement, penalties for not, not meeting the deadlines?
That's, I'm not sure about the deadline or.
I don't like that.
I mean, they would certainly give to that, could be, I don't know, that's not, that can ask.
Certainly, there should be some type of remedy if they, now, obviously, weather concerns could have a, play a huge role in that, but like you talked about now, how tight the schedule is. We need to have some remedy where this contractor is not.
Well, you can try to put that in there, my understanding is you're going to have a hard time with that because in the legal world, acts of God.
Well, again, again, you better do your homework and pick a reputable contractor.
That's, that's exactly right, that's the thing, you know, a good quality person, especially construction managers, a lot more work because they're managing a lot, a lot different way than what they do with a hard bid.
Reference would be good.
Sure, and that's in there, that does certainly have a reference. Want more information on this, I mean, and I mean, that's a big decision, I mean.
What are, what are your expectations, are we ready to act on this or?
I am, and I'm, I reckon going the construction management route, you know, for reasons I've already stated, but, but you need to make sure you're, you're fully understanding that.
Right.
And we are ready, because if we're not going construction management, we got to get Mr. Buckley busy on some plans. I mean, it's, it's going to take him 60 days to generate some preliminary plans, get things done. Construction management, you know, 30 days and we'll, we'll, may take 30 days to get the semis in and for you guys to make a decision, or who you're going with. Then we'll start all that design and talking discussions about what we're going to accomplish. There's preliminary work there and then he'll, then he'll go talk about it.
Prayer.
I think there's very little.
Yes, sir. Long, you know, Long County just, just finished up that project they did over in Long County, construction man, there's a lot more, a lot more systems are going the construction management route because the prices come down, you know. General contractors are figuring out, I can jack this up too, but, but look for how they're not going to choose me and it's just gotten a lot more competitive because they're getting better at sharpening their petsel and getting it down to, you know, a fair profit for them at the same time, having quality to maintain their credibility amongst them. Construction is always going on, so that reputation's.
We need motion for us to?
Yes, I'd like some action if we.
I'd like to make the motion, we move forward.
Move the second?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Daniel.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to say this, based on what Dr. Branson said, the last four projects we worked have done.
Have had real good luck on them, haven't they?
Oh, yeah.
All right, and I'll get you an updated, I'll let Mr. Buckley know we move forward and we'll get an updated, fine-tuned one, we'll talk about the criteria and things that you want to include in that. We'll get it out, maybe, we'll select maybe in the March, maybe in the March, all right? Thank you. All right, um, next, I, really the next two items are items that, that are really budget items. Um, because, because of the, I guess, kind of the cycle and preparing and trying to make sure our student's on the front end, I'm looking for some guys just to kind of continue moving forward with this. First item is the, our esports. Our Gamma Club at the high school, you know, has been in, been in action since I was a principal, I think we started it there, Dr. Patton started the club back when, because I was the high school principal. It's a great club, provides a lot of opportunities for our kids. The Gamma Club is games, anime, and multimedia alliance, is what Gamma stands for. But they, they branched out into esports, gaming type realm. And what's, what's happened is the Georgia High School Association has decided to make, you know, esports an actual sport, governed by Georgia High School. They had like a, I'll call it a preliminary, a pilot season type thing back in the, in the fall. Dr. Patton ran that through the, through the Gamma Club at the high school, were very successful. And it was great for kids, I think, you know, we got, how many, Dr. Patton?
We had seven people on the team in the fall.
Seven kids on team and that's, that's looking to grow, a lot of kids, that's, that's their niche. And I can tell you in the, just in some of the technology realm where things are going, they're looking for, they're looking for folks to, to operate drones, operate all those, that new technology and it, it kind of lends itself in the same realm, so it, it's not just, you know, mind numbing type of things that they're, they're participating in. I, I think it's a great club, but then this is going to become a Georgia High School sport. Talk to Dr. McDaniel as well as Coach Krib and what we would like to do post here today is to move forward this, add this as another sport to Wayne County High School and treating it with, you know, I guess a coaching supplement. There's some, some big ticket items, you know, of course, we're not talking about a lot of money, you know, four or five thousand dollars that we may need to look at including the budget. But it'd be a non-revenue sport, they have a season, they would be governed, they don't have to have some of the, like, they don't have to have physical and some of those things, but there is documentation of who, who's there to have to be eligible, I believe, and those types of things.
That's correct.
That go through it, but I would like to see us pursue this and, and give our kids another positive outlet at the high school. But we just need to, I kind of need to know we're going to move forward with this and I'll let you know that the budget it has, very, very minimal, yes.
Yes, please.
Salute.
Move the second.
Mr. Allen.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. Daniel. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
What's the season?
Se, Dr. Patton, help me out?
Yes, ma'am, um, the season runs, there's actually a fall season and a spring season, so we concluded the, uh, the fall season, the pilot season, um, in, um, they had playoffs in January, and then, uh, February twenty-sixth is the first match day of the new season, so we're in between right now. And we've actually added about, uh, seven more, uh, players, potential players. We're ha, we're still having practices in the interim to see who's good enough to be on, it looks like we have an A-team and a B-team, so probably have ten or twelve players this time around.
What type of game are you, are you engaged in?
The, uh, the esports games that are selected by GHSA and their officiating organization Playversus, uh, were, uh, the original one was called, uh, uh, League of Legends, it's a five-on-five, multi-tier, uh, arena sport, kind of like capture the flag, but everybody's got a position, and like in a basketball game, everybody's got a position to play. Um, that's gonna continue to be the lead one, um, that's the one we made it to the Sweet Sixteen in, um, and, uh, and I guess you'd call us district champs because there's nobody even closest. Nobody even close. Yeah, right, well, State Spur was the closest, so we beat, we beat all of them. Um, but so they, they added, uh, a soccer game called Rocket League, it's soccer in cars, also a team game, three-on-three. We have a few kids that are interested in that, we're still waiting to see if we have enough players for, for a team on that. So, uh, the, the different games play on different days, but as of right now, uh, League of Legends plays on Tuesdays, and we have all our practices on Thursdays. I think Rocket League, if we get a team, will be playing on Thursdays, so Tuesday, Thursday's four.
So they're actually sports games and they're not, uh, games dealing with combat or anything like that?
It's, it's, uh, uh, combat, you know, in terms of, uh, it's not like the first-person shooters like, uh, you see these, uh, what is the popular one? You know, whatever.
Fortnite.
Fortnite, nothing like that. But it is, uh, you know, they have various characters, they play some of them using, you know, in this one game, League of Legends, some of them have magic, some of them have, you know, fighting skills, whatever. But it's, um, that's part of the fun of it, that I've been enjoying watching them, because, uh, they go through, every match, they go through a disqualifying phase where they, uh, pick the other team's, uh, players that, characters that they can't play. So they ban each other's characters and they choose characters, and so they're never really exactly sure which of those palms they're going to be playing. And then they just, uh, they go, we actually have on our team a couple of veteran players that have been playing the sport for five or six years, uh, because it's free online, you can download it. And, uh, that's the reason why we went so far, and we're training up some other ones that are, that are learning from them. I've got co-captains, Derek Kendall-Airia and Samira Long, they're, uh, they're really showing leadership for the younger players, and I've seen communication and team spirit like I've never saw before in regular Gamma, because they've got a focus now, where they've got to work together, communicate. And when they won, I tell you, they, whenever they win, they, you can hear it all the way down the hallway, and it's something else.
Thank you, Dr. Patton. All right, um, and the next item, uh, Mr. McGee has, has, has been in contact with, with both, both principals at the middle school and, and where they're wanting to, kind of like we added middle school major recs a, a few years back. At the point now where they have a, um, individual at both middle schools ready to, you know, implement, uh, middle school flag core dance line. And so they're, they're at the point where they're kind of preparing for next year, getting ready for tryouts, signups, tryouts, kind of see where it's gonna go, what kind of, uh, interest they're gonna have in it. And so, you know, we would like to just, uh, I'm proposing that we just kind of follow the blueprint we used with the middle school major recs. Again, I, you know, I like the kids involved in there at the school, and doing as much as we can, um, you know, I spoke with Daniel earlier, we, you know, there's some things we need to be careful with. We are adding another, um, there's only so many kids at school, so we need to make sure we protect our, you know, right now, as far as doing two sports, two activities, three sports, three activities, that's the sort of thing, you know, this is, this is one of those activities that I agree with her, I don't see how you're gonna be committed to the band and committed to this and also play softball or some other sport or something that is so time-consuming. So we'll have those discussions on the, on the front end if we move forward, but I, you know, this is something I think we can do. Um, we did a little supplement for those folks now, and I'd like to, you know, just stay in line, you know, again, follow that blue, blueprint. I'll give the specifics to you as we progress with budget discussion, approval of supplement schedules and those types of things.
Will you share with us, uh, when you get to that point of the selection process? Anytime that becomes very continued.
Let's try to get to this March without any conflict.
I just say, whenever they make the, do the selection process, I feel like that, whatever they decided, that we just need to support them on that, that point-blank period. They're the ones that have been hired to make that selection, and we're trusting them to do it, so once they make the selection, whether, uh, Grandma's not happy with it or not, or whoever's not happy with it or not, then, you know, that's just what we need to go with. Whenever it didn't make the baseball team this junior year, guess what? Eric didn't make the baseball team that year. There was a lesson learned, we move on.
So is this something that we want to move forward with?
Yes.
Second.
Move to second.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much, I'll keep you posted on that. Um, all right, this time I think we're gonna turn it over to Ms. Williams, we have our, uh, part of our, our CCRPI, I'll remind you, this is this, uh, financial star efficiency rating, though it's not part of the, uh, accountability realm, it is included in our report, and we received that information just here recently, but I'm gonna let Ms. Williams present that, but it's, it's very good, exciting.
It is, I have a very short PowerPoint. Uh, but you should have it on the screen too. Um, so the financial efficiency star rating compares our CCRPI score with our per pupil expenditures, and we look at that as a district and per school. And for the new board members, um, I'll try to go into a little bit more detail, the other board members have heard this for a few years in a row. But, um, each school and each school system, I'm on the second slide. Um, you can get from a half of a star up to five stars. And so a five-star school district would have strong or high CCRPI scores with low levels of expenditures. And they take the total expenditures for each school and divide it by the number of students at that school. The next slide shows, um, the expenditures that are excluded from this calculation. They don't include debt service, which is where we pay our bonds, no capital projects, school activity, which is the principal's accounts. We do not include prepay, school nutrition, depreciation, or transportation. And then when we get this rating, it's an average of three years. The next slide shows the, the matrix that they use, and for example, I made a couple of notes here, um, you, when you compare like a couple of the schools that I compared, Martha Ross Smith had a CCRPI of seventy-three point one, but they were in, in the sixty-second percentile for spending. So they got two and a half stars. Jamesy Bacon had a very similar CCRPI score, but they were only in the twenty-fifth percentile for spending, so they got three and a half stars. So you look at this matrix and you, you look at the CCRPI score, and then you see what percentile they're in for their spending, and that's how to determine how many stars each school gets. So Arthur Williams got three and a half stars, Martha Pope at three, Wayne County High School four, Martha Ross two and a half, Jamesy Bacon, three and a half, Jess Elementary three, Scriven had two and a half, Oden Elementary four, and the system's rating was four. So some of those schools that had the two and a half stars, which is the lowest that we have, the two and a half stars, is because they were in the high, want some of the highest percentiles for per pupil expenditures. We spent more money per student at our school than we did some of the other schools. Our total per pupil expenditure for the system was eight thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighteen cents per student, and that as a system, we were in the seventeen percentile. And this is just an information tool for citizens to look at, or for the board to look at, just to see how we compare to other school districts and how each school compares to each other. Any questions?
All right, then we have the December financial report.
I have to give kudos to Miss Sarah back here with that one short meeting that I sat in for her. Oh, and I should give something to her. Um, page one of the December financial report, about halfway down, you'll see that at the end of December, we had eight point seven million dollars for, um, total operating cash. We did move some of that, um, all of that's not in our checking account or in our operating account, we moved some of that into Georgia Fund One, which is an investment account. And we're earning about two point three percent interest on, on that money. Um, total taxes collected through December was nine point eight million. The next page is the balance sheet for the general fund, and through the end of December, we had nine point one million dollars in fund balance. The next page is revenue for the general fund, the current revenue for December was three, right at three point three million, twenty-two point six year-to-date. And the next several pages, um, are the expenditures for the general fund, all of our departments are on target for their budgets. We do have, um, trying to keep a close eye on maintenance and transportation, make sure that they're staying in line as much as possible. Having conversations with them about once a week, tracking their budgets. Until they do any sizable purchase order, they probably make sure that, that things are gonna be in line before they make any large, um, purchases. Page ten is our capital projects, the only activity here, we did receive two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars in sales tax, and we also received the balance of the entitlement funds on the Oden Elementary. The state holds back ten percent until the board signs off on those projects. And I think you did, we did the paperwork probably in October, maybe, it takes a while for us to get our funds, but we got those funds on December twenty-first. And the next page is federal funds and prepay. Again, those, those all come to a zero at the end of the year, the revenue and the expenditures match each other at the end of the year, so all those budgets are, we're still on some of those budgets when we receive additional funds, or most of those budgets are amended at least once per year, and those are presented to you as part of the financial report. School food service, year-to-date, revenues exceed expenditures by three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. So they're kind of a good year. Any questions on the December financial report?
Motion for approval.
So moved.
Move to second.
Mr. Allen.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Harris.
Yes, ma'am.
Daniel.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I'm sorry, can I update them on bonds?
Oh, yes.
Um, let you know where we are with the bonds, we, um, Dr. Brinson and I had a conference call. Moody's, that, that's the rating, I would say for bonds, they basically give you your, your credit score, and, um, we got that rating yesterday. Um, we have a favorable rating, it's a AA, which is, you know, a pretty, a pretty good score. So they will publish that, um, there will be some paperwork that will be approved by the board at the next board meeting, and then the following day, we'll be able to sell the bonds and, um, and get some money in the bank to start, start, start on some of these projects.
Have you heard anything from the flip of money yet? Let me ask you.
Because.
Herschel hired a man, and I think he knows what it's gonna be.
No, I ha, I have not, I haven't got any feedback from him.
All right, any questions on that? That's some of that same information I sent you, the email. All right, last item, we have, we just have several policies for, uh, just for review at this point, consideration, and then we'll ask you to consider taking action at the regular meeting in two weeks. But the first one I have is, uh, policy DC, which is level of budgetary control. That's kind of self-explanatory. Next, uh, next policy is our conflict of interest policy, BHA. The next one is GBRC, employee workload. It's self-explanatory, but it's just, these are for times for review, so let me know if you want to make any changes, see any problems, anything out, out of line, or something you'd like to see changed. Work on that between now and next meeting, but we'll, uh, we'll take action at the next meeting. And the last one is our bid policy, DJEB, this is the one we talked about, I got several meetings ago, I guess, um, but we made, Ms. Williams, you want to give us, you know, what we changed here, and I know there's some concerns, so we changed, um, I can't remember, just the ten thousand.
We made, um.
Left a hundred thousand like it was, go ahead.
We made some changes to being compliance with the, the federal requirements, um, we added in the last paragraph that the last, in the first paragraph, the last sentence, we added that sentence there, new projects with the state passed to ten thousand or more will be published on the Georgia procurement website, that's ten, that's the guidelines. Um, the sentence at the end of the second paragraph that we removed, our yearly contracts shall follow the sealed bids or proposal guidelines, because we have lots of yearly contracts and that, for service agreements, maintenance agreements, and, and things that, that was just entirely too cumbersome for a staff of our size to, to maintain that requirement. We changed the amount, um, in the third paragraph from five thousand to ten thousand, and then the last paragraph on that first section, purchases involving a price of ten thousand and one dollars per more, per unit, um, should, we should receive two competitive quotes, and then prices of a hundred thousand or more per unit shall be based on competitive process.
Questions, comments, anything on that? Again, this is just review at this time, but we'll make, take action at next meeting, just let me know, once you've had a chance to digest this. Anything else?
Moving into executive session to discuss a delivery upon the departmental board in trying to say this, this bring action or this, this so our fair evaluation of a public officer or group or the intermediate after this work position, so you can tell, have a motion for executive session.
So moved.
Move to second.
Mr. Allen.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Harris.
Yes, ma'am.
Daniel.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to adjourn.
No move.
Mr. Allen.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Harris.
Yes, ma'am.
Daniel.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Twenty nineteen twenty certified recommendations, central office staff and administrators, uh, with the removal of Ms. Carla Ogden. Motion for approval for that list as presented.
So, so second.
Move to second.
Mr. Allen.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Davidson.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Harris.
Epstein.
Mr. Daniel.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ripit.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion for approval of Ms. Carla Ogden as administrator.
So moved.
Move to second.
Mr. Allen.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Davidson.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Harris.
Epstein.
Mr. Daniel.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Ripit.
Yes, ma'am.
Twenty nineteen twenty certified recommendations. Twenty nineteen twenty certified recommendations for teachers with the removal of Ms. Ashley Beaver and Sherona Lott. Motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Move to second.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Miss Daniel?
Epstein.
Smith.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion for approval for Ms. Ashley Beaver and Ms. Sherona Lott, certified recommendations for teachers.
So moved.
Second. Move to second.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes, ma'am.
Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Miss Daniel?
Epstein.
Miss Daniel, so, and Mr. Rippon?
So moved.
Personnel recommendations for February twelfth, two thousand nineteen, certified resignations, Tina Binner, Arthur Williams retirement, Victoria Cochrane, Martha Ross Smith Elementary, Jeanette Fillmore, Arthur Williams Middle School retirement, Gary Hardy, WCHS retirement, Metis Lee, Scriven Elementary, Mitzi, I'm sorry, Mitzi Lee, Scriven Elementary retirement, Dawn Mallard, Martha Ross Smith retirement, Kristen Morris, Arthur Williams Middle School, Dick Parker, Arthur Williams Middle School, Jeff Rigerson, Arthur Williams Middle School retirement, and Kimberly Tate, James E. Bacon retirement. Classified resignations, Julia Bartlett, Martha Ross Smith Elementary, Brenda Hodges, Jess Elementary retirement, Robert Mitchell, James E. Bacon, Heather Schefker, James E. Bacon, Clarence Smart, Jess Elementary, Jennifer Struckoff, Martha Ross Smith Elementary. Classified term extension, Pamela Tillman Transportation, Pamela Tillman School Food Service. Motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Move to second.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Harris?
Yes, ma'am.
Miss Daniel?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Rippon?
Yes, ma'am.
Just trying to get you.
Um, when George, Mr., excuse me, Dr. Brinson stated a union address on education today in Wayne County, uh, the coaching background came out, and, uh, very, it was very quick to give all of you folks and teachers, and that, the whole, uh, employees in our school system credit. He said, I commend y'all, and I'm the work y'all, and just thank you, invited good collaboration today, and all y'all, and scores are showing it, so, good job.
Um, I looked at the teacher retirement list and saw some very good differences that, uh, I think the school system is going to miss, uh, because they're very good teachers, especially Miss Tina Binner, uh, Marty Martin, I, I was going to miss that. She spends a lot of time after school with kids, so, uh, we got to get to work on replacing some good teachers, can replace Miss Tina Binner, can you? And I want to say congratulations to both our girls' and boys' basketball teams, our girls' camp were runners-up in the region, and our boys were region champs, so, you know, uh, shout-out to, uh, Coach Ray and, uh, Coach Hobbs for the job well done.
Uh, I don't, I don't really have anything we did, uh, it's kind of crazy to say you enjoy training, but yesterday, I learned a lot, really. So, it was a three-hour training, but it was not hard to sit. Good, good information.
Want to comment on the, uh, ceremony Saturday, uh, at noon honoring Ms. Arlene Fuquay, the ones of you who didn't make it, you missed a wonderful ceremony, honoring a wonderful woman, and, uh, on behalf of the Wayne County Board of Education, we're very proud to be a small part in making that event, uh, possible, but it, it was a great day for everybody.
Uh, Dr. I just said, we looked in, Students' Bowser Board is wanting to do the clothing drive with United Way again, but I told them I wanted to, um, talk with you, maybe check with the administrators to see how they, if they want to be a part of it, I know it was a huge, um, overtaking responsibility. Um, and I didn't want to put that responsibility on anybody, especially when you have working bees go off to college camp, he's gone, and, um, he is a working bee, um, and I don't think anybody stepped up to the plate to do it, and I explained that to them, but they want to do it, and I just don't see the drive, because they got to be able to drive, and
Right.
we got a, we got a lot of sophomores and freshmen this year, and so driving is not something, but if you could just find out from the principals, if they want to be a part of it, if, if no pressure, we're going to do it at the high school, but I just want to see if the other schools want to be a part of it. Thanks.
Um, real quick, I just want to add a little, uh, just like Pippin said earlier, I just want to, you know, most of these directors left, but they're working extremely hard, busy, busy time of the year, of course, the contracts are going out, uh, tomorrow, I appreciate you, your support in getting, getting our, um, getting us in the front of the line to hire these, uh, new teachers and, and filling these spots that people are leaving, that's the reason you see these retirements, we, you know, we, we had this conversation with folks, and if they are retiring, we try to go ahead and make sure they're getting everything, you know, in order where they can go out in retirement, don't have any hiccups, but at the same time, we make sure we're replacing them with the, the best teachers we can do. Um, directors working extremely hard, preparing for, you know, our advanced debt visit next month, Miss Tina Moses, Miss Tina Moses has done a wonderful job, um, it's a big undertaking, but they worked extremely hard, we got to, we got our last visits tomorrow, our last visits, we've been to all eight schools, and, and we're finishing up tomorrow with those, we've been going in just about every single classroom, you know, do a short observation as part of that process, but, um, and there's, no doubt, we're going to knock it out in the park when they come in March, so, I appreciate the hard work.
Oh, oh, one more thing, Doc, um, I, I know we haven't done, we didn't do it with the old board, but Miss Daniel had asked me about, um, us doing a board, um, observation or walkthrough or something in that nature, whenever the time was right, um, so
Sure.
Just let us know when we can do it.
We'll fit it in. Okay.